The Select Board meeting, it is seven thirteen, seven fourteen. And we have all members present and Mike Tool is joining us via webinar. We hope, we think.
I am.
Oh, good, good.
I am.
Keep your eyes on the road, Mike. Okay, so I'd like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance, into the flag.
The United States of America, and to the Republic where which stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we're going to quickly switch around the order here. I'd like to.
We have to do the public hearing?
No, no, we're going to quickly do this and then we'll do the public hearing.
At seven fifteen, we have to do it?
Well, we have technical difficulties. I have to ask Mike, I don't know, I apologize. We're supposed to start the public hearing at seven fifteen, but it might start a few minutes late because we have to do this.
Just call it the orders and recess.
What? So we call the public, we call the?
Call it the order, then recess.
Thank you.
All right. Do you have the one that John? Mike, since we have the, now we're budding up against seven fifteen here. Do we have to call the order of the public hearing or can we?
Yeah.
Why don't you quickly go through those?
Yeah. All right, do you want to start with the part time?
Sure. We have here tonight Frank Durant. Frank is in President Norton and has submitted his request to be appointed to, as Chair, as Chair, as Director of the Recreation Commission. And Frank is a former planning board member and has experience in organizing various events and fundraising and team building and think will be a good addition to our Recreation Department.
Frank, do you want to say a few words?
You just did my speech for me. Good evening, everybody. Frank Durant, I reside at 114 North West Street with my wife and my foieul son Bryce. Moved to town in 2015 and then next year Stephen and I granted the planning board. We did that for three very productive years. So I don't want to say that I've been not busy, but I've been bored for the last three, since 2019. We had COVID, I've been raising my son. And as I see this as a great opportunity to build myself in the town, to invest the time and to move the POCS and Rec Department forward for the first time in a very long time. So are there any questions before I go on?
Mike, does the Select Board have any questions for Frank?
No, I'm just glad you volunteered to listen.
Thank you.
I don't have any questions.
Like I said, when it comes to communication, there's a lot of room for improvement, a lot of emails and phone calls that need to be returned, so if the very least that's going to be improved. The department needs to be fiscally smart, but at the same time, Founders Day should be an annual event worth having and we need to keep the POCS and Recreation worth having in the town. And for that, I'm here to invest my time and my expertise to move the department forward.
Excellent.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Frank Durant as the part-time Parks, Director of Parks and Recreation with the effective date August 20th, 2022.
Second.
Oh, I'm so sorry, August 15th, 2022.
Two, a couple more days.
Do you still have them on?
All right, all those in favor?
We have to do roll call because Mike was, sorry.
That's all right.
Not trying to be a stickler.
You don't have to, you don't have to.
Is he just, is he just participating or is he can't vote on things?
Oh.
Yeah.
Sorry, I forgot about.
Yeah.
You could do, you could do eyes, hair and mask, Michael.
Okay. We're all eyes here?
Yep.
Yes.
Mike Tool?
He's on mute.
Mike's mic so.
You're on mute, Mike?
All right.
Our future.
Well, you have a majority, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Mike, you're on mute.
Mike, we took a vote on Frank? All right, I think we're good for, like I said, we have a majority, so we will find out later. Thank you very much, congratulations. All right, now I'd like to turn it over to Chief Clark for the next two appointments.
Good evening. So I've come before you tonight to, for the appointment of two police promotions. One is Todd Jackson to the rank of Deputy Police Chief and one is John Goodwin to Police Lieutenant. Todd has over 25 years full-time experience here, 14 as Lieutenant, including accreditation manager, public information officer, firearms licensing officer, scheduling. He also holds a master's degree and is a graduate of the FBI National Academy and adjunct professor at Bridgewater, Bristol Community College. John Goodwin has been a member of the department again for 25 years. He served as a sergeant on various patrol shifts for 14. He's the elder affairs officer. He has a master's degree as well and he's completed the FBI Leader Trilogy.
Does anyone have any questions on the Select Board?
No.
We're thrilled to have you both promoted, so thank you so much for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to, I just have to read them separately because they're separate from the effective dates. I'd like to make a motion to appoint Todd Jackson as full-time civil service Deputy Chief of Police with the effective date August 21st, 2021. I'm sorry, 2022, whoa. And then Jonathan Goodwin for full-time civil service Police Lieutenant with the effective date September 4th, 2022.
I'll second.
All the, Mike is now actually off, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next I want to ask Chief Simmons for the question.
Good evening, everyone. So just have two appointment requests and one announcement for you. First is the appointment request for Eric Aruda, just to my right over here. Eric's been a member of the Cushion and Fire Department for over 15 years. In addition to being a certified paramedic and firefighter, he holds numerous other certifications. I've had the opportunity to work with Eric for over 12 years on the first accounting technical rescue team. And during that time, I've come to know him pretty well. He's a highly motivated person with excellent character, knowledge and skills. And I'm very excited that we finally talked him into coming to Norton. I know it'll be a great addition and a huge asset to our department. The other one is the request for provisional appointment of the position of Lieutenant for five, John Patton, who unfortunately couldn't be here tonight due previous scheduled vacation. But John was born and raised in Norton. He's been a member of our department for over eight years. He's also a certified firefighter, paramedic and also has numerous other certifications. He's also a state certified emergency medical services instructor coordinator and he teaches paramedic students on his time off. He has very good leadership qualities and he's proven to be a huge asset to our department mentoring our new hires. I know he's really looking forward to this new role and now we're excited to have him in that position and I know he'll do an excellent job. Lastly, the announcement of Deputy Chief Keane's retirement. So Deputy Keane's last day will be August 25th. His official retirement date will be September 10th. Deputy Keane's been a member of our department for over 47 years. I think our fire trucks ran on hay back when we started.
Are you sure? I used to drive a 1950 truck.
It was one of the first gas ones we had, probably. Honestly, though, during those 47 years, he's moved up through the ranks, holding all the positions in the department that he could possibly hold, including firefighter, lieutenant, captain, and lastly, the position of Deputy Chief. Additionally, he was one of the first EMTs in the department, taking the course and becoming certified in 1977. So while we'll certainly miss him and his extensive knowledge and experience that he brings to our department, myself and I'm sure I speak for the rest of our department, we're all very happy that he'll get to spend some more quality time with his wife Michelle, his four daughters and 15 grandchildren. Yeah, so I'd like to thank him personally and also on behalf of our department for all of his years of dedicated service and I wish him a happy and healthy retirement, sincerely. Also, just as an announcement, we're having an open house for Deputy Keane on August 25th from 11:00 to 2:00 and anyone's welcome to attend, I would like to. That's all I have for you.
Any comments or from the Select Board?
I have probably a ridiculous question, but what is a provisional full-time lieutenant? Does that mean?
That's a good question. It's not ridiculous. So provisional is like a, is a temporary, it's a civil service way to say temporary.
Okay.
Okay, so five, Patton will be filling a role of the Lieutenant who's out on a long-term injury right now. So in order to reduce overtime, for him to gain experience and also to bring consistency on the shift, we'd like to do a provisional appointment for things that may be long-term later.
Okay.
Yep, great, thank you.
LeBron?
I'd like to make a motion for a permanent full-time firefighter, paramedic for Eric Aruda with the effective date August 22nd, 2022. And also the appointment of the provisional Lieutenant for John Patton with the effective date August 5th, 2022.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations on the retirement. Can I have a motion to open the hearing and vote on open hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, at this time, we're going to close our general session. We're going to open the public hearing and then we'll come back to other. The public hearing for the side jobs.
Thank you very much.
Can I just say we're opening the public hearing? All right, so we're going to be opening the public hearing for Hillside Johnny's.
You had a motion, a second, and everyone vote?
Yeah, we're going to vote. Aye, ayes in favor, aye. And then I'm going to ask for, are we already up here, our chairman?
So good evening.
I'm going to turn it over to you, Ian.
My name's Attorney Ian Hedges. Here on behalf of the applicant, with me here tonight is Brienne Sylvie and Jason Dahl. Miss Sylvie is the sole member of the LLC and the proposed manager of the location and Mr. Dahl is the executive chef of the restaurant. So this is a transfer of a Section 12 restaurant license associated with Tower on the Hill, located at 336 Old Colony Road here in Norton. Miss Sylvie pointed on ramping the restaurant slightly, some aesthetic renovations on the interior from the structural outside. They'll continue doing live music and then updating the menu a little bit, sort of upscale American pub food. Other than that, I don't think I have any more updates, but if you guys have any questions, I have to answer.
Sure, yes.
What changes will be made outside the building?
We currently have no plans to change anything to the exterior of the building, just aesthetics, painting outside, painting inside, you know, some of the upholstery, adding some decor. But as of right now, there's no change to do anything to the outside.
Okay, thank you.
And Brianna, do you have any, do you want to speak?
Nice to see you in person. Really excited, I've, you know, fell in love with that property since we moved back in 2018. It's beautiful, I think the community really loves it, so really looking forward to having, having the opportunity to just bring it up a notch, if you will. Chef Jason, I have all the faith in the world in him, just, you know, we're going to do a simple menu, you know, just quality pub food. You can come in, get some fresh tacos, you know, do some pizza. I know we have lots of other plans. We'd really love to introduce a brunch on Saturdays and Sundays, just because I feel like we're lacking, and Kelly's is delicious and not to compete with them, nobody can compete with Kelly's, but just to bring, you know, in some, just some more brunch options for the weekends.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, can we just, for the record, we just want your name and address.
Ronald O'Reilly, 29 Union Road.
Wonderful, thank you. Is there any other questions for?
I got a question.
Just state your name and your address.
Mine is Jennifer, I'm the other half.
The better half, right?
The best, you've got that right. I live across the pond here and my concern is, is you're not going to have any music or anything up there.
Well, we plan to keep the music on the inside that they do currently on Saturday nights.
Okay.
We would like to add our own system so that we can control the volume, so hopefully that is never an issue for any of the neighbors.
Yeah, that's, that's my only issue, you know, if you go outside, just go right across that pond and into my house.
Absolutely, we do not want to inconvenience anybody with that, so.
Okay, I'm good with that, thank you.
Thank you.
You also own Good See Pub, right?
I do, yes.
Select Board, do you have any other questions?
No.
No? Excellent. So we take a moment and can I have a motion? Right?
To close the public hearing?
Yeah.
To approve?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Vote first.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
I guess the word.
Sorry.
That's okay. I'd like to make a motion for the transfer of the common vehicular license to expose, keep for sale and to sell all kinds of alcoholic beverages to be drunk on the premises at 336 Old Colony Road, Norton. That's who's it's from, 336 Toth LLC DBA Norton Tavern on the Hill. Manager Cheryl Lutz to Hops on the Hill LLC, does business at Hillside Johnny's. Manager Brienne at Sylvie.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And hate to make you do another reading again, but I think there should be an entertainment license and the Section 12 state license.
There'll be a second one.
That's, yeah.
Yeah, we got to do one in it, unfortunately. I don't like to condense around here. No opposed, so the license, the transfer has been approved.
Now you can explain. If there's anything else you want to add in addition to the common vehic, entertainment, I kind of spoke about it, but if there's anything else you had in mind for that, for the license?
This is a voice vote, yeah, for the entertainment.
Everybody said we got to solve our question.
That you're all encompassing for those.
Yeah, that's pretty good, so, all right. I'd like to make a motion to approve the transfer of the common vehicular entertainment, live entertainment and automatic amusement licenses from 336 Toth LLC DBA Norton Tavern on the Hill, some Hops on the Hill, LLC DBA Hillside Johnny's to be utilized at 336 Old Colony Road, Norton, Massachusetts.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Good, congratulations.
I'm going to clap for everybody.
You're supposed to close it before you vote.
Oh, okay. Yeah, it's fine, we're done. Now.
You're supposed to close the public hearing first before you vote.
It's okay.
Before we vote, watch.
For what we just did, so I'm going to motion to close the public hearing.
Select Board? You made for the closing of the public hearing? Aye, ayes opposed? All right, we're going to head back to the appointments. I apologize for the timing of this. We are at.
Robert, 27.
Yeah, appointment of Robert.
Just Bob was on the Cemetery Commission for years and has stepped away and have asked him to come back on to the Cemetery Commission and he has stepped up and said he's willing to do that, so.
Is there an effective date or just?
All right, I'm going to ask for a motion to a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of appointing Bob Kimmel to the Cemetery Commission?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Great, Bob's back on the Cemetery Commission. And then, do we have a council on aging?
Just three for every.
I'm sorry?
There's three for the council on aging.
Yeah, so, yeah, there's three for council on aging. We have two existing alternate members that would like to move up to become permanent members and we also have another applicant that would like to join the council, so you could appoint that, a third person as an alternate and will still have an alternate position available because of the two that they move up.
So do we need to have a number?
Mike, you've got the names, really?
Oh, you have the names too?
Yeah. Cool, so there's Ellen Martin.
And Carolyn Colette.
And Tom Galata.
I'm here.
And I'm here, yeah.
Wonderful, hello. Sorry, we're trying to catch up here from technical difficulties. Excellent. So do we just have to?
We can have discussion, yeah.
Is there any discussion? Would any of you like to come up and say anything or? We're welcome. We love our volunteers, so I'll give you the bar.
I'm Tom Galata, 25 Plain Street. My wife and I have been going to the seniors center for the last two months to help with technology for the seniors.
You could have helped us here tonight.
We don't do the backing. It's amazing how many need help with their cell phones, their tablets, their computers, everything. I actually helped a man connect his printer. We dragged his printer in and we connected it. So we've been there a lot, we've seen everything that it offers. It offers a ton. I myself, I guess, could officially be in the senior category, although mentally I don't feel that way, but I'd love to be able to help them move forward as we get into the new building. And Beth Rossia and I were talking and she said, would you consider running for board? And I said, sure. So I'd love to be able to help them out in any way that I can. It's a great, great organization and if you've never been in there, take some time and go in, volunteer some services for them. It's really worthwhile, they do so much in that tiny little space. It's about, not even half of this, I don't think, so, thank you.
Great, thank you so much.
Thanks, thank you.
Excellent. All right, do we have a motion to approve?
Yeah, so I think, I'll read it kind of the way that Mike said it. I'd like to make a motion to appoint Ellen Martin and Carolyn Colette as members to the Council on Aging and Tom Galata as an alternate member to the Council on Aging.
Effective immediately.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Wonderful, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then Keith Silver. You're ready to talk about, I think there's two, correct?
Just seven.
Nope, just seven, okay. Not just seven, but. Do we have an appointment?
How you doing?
Good.
Good. This is Evan Myers. He worked, like, summer helped for me for like four months now and I had employee leave and he's worked for the Cemetery Department, he's worked for the Highway Trees, he's done very well there. So I offered him the job, he's trying to get his hydraulic license right now and then he's going to start looking to get his CDL, so. Driver labor, but he's done really well in the department, so give him opportunity to go for it, you know?
So this is not something to approve, right? Because it's not like we did.
Yeah. I'd like to make a, oh, we have any questions?
Is there any questions from the board?
I have a question from Mike. Does the town do any kind of reimbursement for licensing or?
We're working on it. CDL, years ago, you go to the primary, take a road test, get your license. Now it's like going to college, you got to, you got to actually go to a class and then once you pass the class, you can get your CDL and you go back to class. It's like a huge procedure, it's a lot of money now, so I.
Probably charge you for each step, right?
Yeah, I'm trying to talk to Mike, we could do something because you can't afford it.
Okay, great. Thanks, Keith.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the appointment of the, of driver labor for Evan Myers, of the effective date August 1st, 2022.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you. Everyone gets a laugh.
I know, this is a very happy day.
We're not going to clap for Mike.
No.
Appointing yourself, let's go.
So it came up recently when we were talking about the appointment and I, you know, I said to the director of the MFN and our attorney, I said, well, I was appointed three years, for a three-year term. And they said, well, it didn't say that, so. This, the attorney worked on a letter here, a motion, and really just saying that at a meeting, the Select Board voted to reaffirm that my appointment to the MFN will be through June 30th, 2023.
2023 or 2024?
2023.
Okay.
No, you have 2024 in here.
Okay. Sorry.
On the, on the letter, it says 2023, yeah.
All right, then in the, in the.
I'll come back after 2023.
So I would just say through 2023. Okay, if I have to reiterate.
Do you want to know my one thing I'm going to say, Mike?
Yes. Did he put select on that?
Uh huh, that's all. That is all.
Or at the time of what?
At the time, yeah, probably, so that's my, that's my only thing, but.
All right, do we have a motion?
Go ahead. You want to try it? I'll give it a shot. All right, I'd like to make a motion to reaffirm the appointment of Michael Unitz as the Select Board's representative member to the MFN Wastewater District Commission for a term to expire June 30th, 2023.
I'll second that. I just had a question, is it usually town managers that are appointed?
Originally, it was all three town managers. Now, one town manager, sadly, town manager.
All right, so we had a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Mike. All right, we're almost getting there. All right, you're next on the tax custodian.
Oh, okay, so the tax custodian is a position, the, the treasure collector usually serves in, so any property that the treasure collector has to, goes through tax title and the treasure collector takes, the custodian, she would be in charge of that, she, she's able to have auctions and to sell off those properties and this is usually a position that we've always given to the treasure collector and I ask that you appoint the treasure collector to that.
Do we have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to have the treasure collector as the tax custodian.
Can that be effective immediately?
Yes.
Just a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Appointed. Now do you want to?
Sorry, aye.
No, no, we got you, we're good, we're good. The appointment of Judith, is this?
Yeah, I think you have a letter from the Council on Aging and talking about all the work that Judith Lurie has done for the council and she was on the board for years and they're asking that she be appointed as an emeritus, emeritus member to the Council on Aging. And the Council on Aging voted that and they ask that you also vote that.
Can you just clarify, just for everybody?
Yeah, sure, emeritus, a lot of times you'll see that with like professors and it's an honorary title so that she'll be able to continue to be involved.
Thank you. And if you can see in your packets, the entire board endorsed it. And if you can see in your packets, the entire board endorsed it, so. I don't think there's anyone opposing this. So any other questions?
No. I move to appoint Jugath Leroux as emeritus member to the Council on Aging.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Wonderful. All right, now we're gonna have to go back to the public hearing. Oh, okay. All right, we have one minute before the minute, so we're gonna prove the minutes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the June 22nd and July 13th minutes.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Excellent.
See?
The minutes, you're, you're good.
Did it within, right.
Within the minute, all right. Now we're gonna what, ask for a motion to close?
To open the public, to open the public hearing.
Open the public hearing for the application for a transfer of the retail packaged goods store license.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I'm in. And you are John?
Yes, I am.
Hi, wonderful. Go ahead, what is yours?
Great, John Meridian, Democas Law Offices, I'm here on behalf of J. Cotec LLC, with me is J. Cotec, Praveesh Patel, and we're seeking tonight approval of the transfer of the beer and wine license over at Sun Market, 181 West Main Street. It's simply a transfer of business ownership, there's no changes to the store layout or anything like that, and we're seeking approval of transfer of the license, and approval of Praveesh Patel as a manager of record when this is transferred. This will happen, you know, after this is approved tonight, I don't know, four to six weeks, depending on the ABCC's, they're only quite slowly enough, so. Praveesh is tip certified, about three employees, there's an ID scanner now there to help combat underage sales, and that will remain there. Otherwise, any questions of the transfer, we'll welcome them from the board.
I'm just trying to picture, this is on the corner of Main and?
It's across from God's Lippa.
Yep.
Oh, no, it's right here, in that, in that, yeah, okay, then we'll.
181 West Main Street.
And no questions? Any more questions? No?
Just, I'm checking, that's all.
Okay. Good.
So I'll motion to close the public hearing.
So, well, second, sorry.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Now I'd like to get a motion to vote.
I'd like to make a motion for the transfer of the retail packaged goods store license to expose, keep for sale and sell wines and malt beverages, not to be drunk on the premises at 181 West Main Street, North Massachusetts, from, I apologize, Wallop Lippa Inc., does business at Sun Market, manager, Amarish Patel, to J. Cotec LLC, DBA, Sun Market, manager, Praveesh Patel, same address.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Excellent, congratulations.
Thank you.
What?
What a hatter crowd.
You have so many people. All right, let's get through these one-day liquor licenses. Who wants to take one?
I knew you were gonna look at me, I know it. All right.
Wait, hold on.
Item number nine. Item number four.
I'll just get my hands on that.
No, I, no, I'm gonna, I'm gonna. Do you wanna come up?
Sure.
Two items, let's start with the C2 Foundation.
All right, so, the C2 Foundation was created last year in the memory of Deputy Chief Thomas Peterson, and through their efforts and their fundraising, you know, one of the things is to keep his memory alive, one of the things that he always kind of was pushing to get was a RTE, and it's something that we can use for community policing, for other type of events that, that might come up, we can use it for regional affairs, certainly for rescues and things like that, so. Michelle Peterson's in the back here, representing the C2 Foundation tonight, and I would just ask you to accept the gift.
Michelle, do you wanna say anything?
I'm good. We're happy to donate.
Well, wonderful, appreciate it. Does anyone have any questions?
No.
I don't know if everybody saw, I do have a picture of it.
Yeah.
Are you leasing that out to anyone?
Very cool.
That's awesome.
I'll drive that to Halloween.
Can I read it once and then a lot, if you want it?
Excellent.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the gift of a reggaeton vehicle from the C2 Foundation to the North and Police Department.
I'll happily second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Wonderful. Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
And the other issue is just a declaration of surplus properties for an unclaimed bicycle that we have, and for old police-style bikes that we used decades ago, so.
I like that they actually say police on them.
Where, now where do they go to auction? I've gotten a hundred questions on it, what's, what's the post of agent?
The highway superintendent will point it up on the municipal bit.
Okay.
And it goes there.
Excellent. Do the motion declare the bikes to be surplus?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Wonderful.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We didn't talk to the bikes, so.
All right, should we now go back to liquor licenses?
Now, it's gonna start.
All right.
Yes.
Okay, so I have, so item four, am I gonna read item four and five and six? Or just four?
No, we already did four, that was part of the, four was part of the public hearing.
A, B, C.
So five, A, B, C, D.
Six is?
No.
Six is separate.
Oh, you have a different number than us, we have four, yes, four, A, B, C, D.
Okay, all right. There we go. I move to vote to approve the one-day beer and wine liquor license to Robert Meadas for a private event at 98 A. Bird Street from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. on Saturday, August 13th, 2022, and to approve the one-day all-alcohol liquor license to Jennifer Morabito for a private event at Everett Leonard Park from 1:00 to 5:00 p.m. on Sunday, August 28th, 2022, and to approve the one-day all-alcohol liquor license to Karen Riecha for a private event at Everett Leonard Park from 1:00 to 6:00 p.m. on Saturday, August 20th, 2022, and to approve the one-day beer and wine liquor license to Susan McNary for a private event at Sweet Stuff Bakery from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. on Saturday, September 24th, 2022.
I'll second.
All those in favor to approve? We'll do a roll call, 'cause it's full?
'Cause it's liquor.
Okay.
All right, can I do a roll call for all four?
Yeah.
I'd like to do a roll call for all four, for, to approve the liquor licenses, the one-day liquor licenses. Steve?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Christine?
Yes.
And myself, and a yes, so four yeses. Is that approved?
No question.
No question. And then, is this just another, are we approved?
Yeah. All right, so, I move to review and vote, excuse me, I move to review and vote to approve the application for the transfer of a common victual, victual license from Stone Restaurant Group Incorporated, DBA AJ Stoneham Pizzeria, to Williams Joseph Group LLC.
Oh, good evening, Kevin, my name is Darlie Joseph, I am, I'm a veteran, I was a chef in the military, I served for seven years, and I saw the opportunity that AJ, he was selling the restaurant, so I jumped onto the, the opportunity to buy it, and I'm asking that you would approve the common victual license, so that we can open it.
Wonderful, what do you plan on, are you planning, what kind of restaurant?
It's a pizza. There's regular pizza, Italian pizza, and also vegan, vegan pizza.
So Kevin, you move, you can move up?
I did, I'll, I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Wonderful.
I'll be for that.
Thank you.
Okay, the last thing we have a vote to approve. I'd like to ask for a vote to approve the special events applications for the annual Rodman Ride for Kids, for the 2022 cycling finals to be held on September, Saturday, September 24th, 2022, 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. I don't know, I've participated in the Rodman Ride for Kids, I don't know if you guys have it, it's awesome that it's actually gonna come through Norton, so, I don't see how anyone can oppose it, but if you want to. Is there any discussion, any more questions on it?
No questions.
No.
Excellent.
I just wanted to say she apologized she couldn't make it tonight by that, but we told her it's an event we do all the time, so.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to, oh, wait, you, oh, wait, so moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, excellent, we approve the special events application. Did we miss anything coming back up here?
No, we got them all.
All right. New business.
We should turn to Michelle.
Good time. Sorry if you were sleeping.
Are we going too quick or too slow?
We're fine, we're fine. Good evening. I just wanna go over with you the new election laws that have become into effect by the state. Early voting is now required in all elections, state, federal, and primaries. The state elections, the states have those postcards, which I'm sure you all have received. Town elections will be at the option of the select board to approve early voting, not necessarily sending out the cards, the town will have to foot that cost, which would be a lot, but we make the early voting available by filling out the applications. What else? We've got, just so you'll know, that 13,885 postcards were mailed out, we have received 1,300, no, we've mailed out 1,357 ballots so far, for people who have requested them, and we received back so far 195 as of today and today. So primaries usually don't create a whole big turnout. Early voting, I, you, did you all get that? The early voting is going to be, the live early voting is going to be held at the fire department on the side bay door, the garage there on the side. There will be Saturday, August 27th, from 8:00 to 2:00, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, August 29th, 30, 31st, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., Thursday, September 1st, from 2:00 to 6:00, Friday, September 2nd, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. They're only requiring, where it's a primary, three hours per day, I've extended a little bit for the Thursday, and I'm not doing Sunday, you can do Saturday and Sunday for three hours each, but I'm just gonna do the six hours on the Saturday. That's the one week for the state election in November, there's going to be two weeks of live early voting, so, we, those, that, all that hasn't been determined yet, it will be at the same place, but the hours haven't been in dates, well, we have the dates, but there hasn't been determined. There's also, Mike is gonna speak, on the police officer assignment, the detail for the elections, we have two police officers, in the state law, they have thrown a little thingy into it, so, Mike, you wanna explain to them?
The chief came back, and, so they, it's kinda strange. They put something in the legislation that the select board would assign the police officers, which, I don't know why they put that in there, and Brian can talk a little bit about it. I, I can see the select board requesting police officers, but it would be up to the chief to assign.
Yeah, it's, it's basically, the law's kinda convoluted, nobody really knows why they, they put it in there, but it's, it's just that, you know, you work with the election workers to come up with a number of police officers, and then you basically, you know, tell the town clerk, this is how many, and I'm sure she could tell you what we've used in the past, that would help you make that decision, and then she tells me how many, and that's it. It's not like you get to pick, you know, I want John Goodwin, or I want Todd Jackson, or I want.
Same way it was said, yeah. Why would we?
You'll have a couple of failed practices if you do that.
So I, I think also, on the poll workers, they have to be appointed now, so, it's gotta be six weeks, otherwise a town clerk can't appoint them, I've been appointed for the primary, but what I will do is, at the primary, find out who's gonna work for the state, and I will send you guys to a meeting, a list at one year meeting, so you can appoint them all into the jury. Is that okay? And, I don't know, do you have any questions?
I'm sorry, you said the state primary is gonna be at the schools, right?
Yes, all elections are at the schools.
So again, I know this silly question, but it is the first day of school.
Yes, it is.
Gonna make this any more challenging.
I went, I went to the school, I spoke to the school, the school committee said no, they wouldn't, they wouldn't hold, they wouldn't hold the opening of school. Yeah, so it's, it's.
So it's at the middle school, right?
It's at the middle school, so yeah, it is going to be a challenge, but what are you gonna do, they, you know, they said no, so.
How many voters do we typically get for a primary?
A primary, we, we usually do not get more than 2,000, I think with the early voting, I'm gonna say maybe 1,200, if that, because like I said before, primaries just, it is an important primary to this one, but, we'll see.
So my only question is, if we're, we're appointing, how many officers are gonna be there? Obviously, there can be more if you decide it needs to be one.
Yeah, I, I already spoke with the chief, and normally what we do, we have two police officers on details at the elections. I will hold two, at the presidential, we have three, and at a presidential, I will go more, because we're working out of the cafeteria, we're working out of the gym, because it's so big, and then one is outside to.
Okay, I just wanna make sure we're not limiting it, because if the chief decides he needs more, then yeah.
If we need more, we'll get more.
So along with, it says, yeah, two officers, so that's what we're signing?
Yes, that's for the primary, yeah, primary and state will be.
I don't know if you can make a motion for this, Mike?
To assign.
Probably. I'm always going higher.
Cause we're signing, is that what we?
Just, if you could make a motion to authorize the police chief to assign officers to the polling places.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And just one last thing, if you can, I believe it's for you to sign, if you can get that warrant signed tonight, so we can get it out there posted.
Yep.
We got it right here.
Do we need to, for the warrant, is that a discussion or a vote? Oh, no, no, that's a different one. It's still a case.
I think we're good.
Be good?
We'll give you these. I wanna put it in my car.
Never get that.
Do you clap for Lucia?
All right.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Lucia.
Thank you, chief.
Oh, I know who's calling this, no.
All right.
What?
Do you want to take it?
We'll do the, yeah, the man's called that.
Sure, and I bring this here. Sure, and I tried to find the motion and I couldn't.
Come on up.
So.
So next week, the state plans to put on everything together to go out to bid for the bike trail. You know, we've been doing this for, I don't know how many years now, quite a number of years. And now we're finally getting to the point where we can go out to bid. And so we have to have everything to them by Monday, everything recorded. So the next step is for you to vote to do the takings. Shireen has done a motion here, she can probably explain this whole thing better than I can. And once those are on file, we'll be sending notices to all the property owners, letting them know and what the process is from there for them to obtain the payment for the takings.
Good evening, I'm Shireen Everett from K P Law, Town Council's office. So as Mike said, we've been working on these takings for a long time. You know, and, and wife and everybody in town has done a great job in reaching out to everybody. And now we're at the time when we're ready to go. And the state requires us to get the takings on record by next week. And they can go ahead and put the money in for construction. So what you have before you are two orders of taking. One of the takings is with the M F N. They agreed to assist the town in the compensation that's being offered. Also are taking utility easements in the same areas where we're taking the public trail easements. So there is one joint order of taking with the M F N pursuant to which we take permanent trail easements. And then there's a second order of taking with the town alone, taking utility easements, sidewalk easements, and other temporary construction easements. Those have been separated because M F N does not require those extraneous easements, they only need the two ways. So that's why you have two orders of taking. And I request that you please sign both of them tonight. And award the damages that are set for the schedule attached to the order of taking. And we have before you the motion that I drafted. If you have any questions, we have to answer them.
Anyone have any questions?
I'd like to move pursuant to the vote taken under Article 9 of the October 21st, 2019 special town meeting, to take by eminent domain permanent and temporary easements for the Norton Mansfield rail trail and to execute orders, the orders of taking in the form prepared by town council and to award damages in the amount set forth in said orders of taking and further to accept the easements of the town of Mansfield. So.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, you're at the final finish line here.
If I could, I just wanted, Chris Keys is here, I just wanted to thank Chris. Chris has been working with us and doing unbelievable work in putting all the packets together, meeting with residents, answering questions. And unfortunately, he'll have to come back on vacation from California sometime to see the trail. He, in about two weeks, Chris will be heading to California, moving out of Norton to California. After all the work he's done, I really hope he gets back here to see it. We could have done it without, without Chris helping us out.
Good job, Chris.
Go ahead. This is the contract work for.
Right. This is for Sircic. You previously voted the contract award. And due to a technicality, that bidder bid was rejected. And so now I'm asking that you amend the contract award under item 23 to Ferguson Water Works, or rescind the award that was made to Steel Fabrication and award that to Ferguson Water Works.
They rejected the contract that they put in front of us?
The, the Steel Fabrication, they originally gave us that as the quote. But the, it was a technicality in their bid that they had to be rejected. So we have to go to the next bidder, Ferguson.
All right.
So moved, is that right?
Yeah, would that work?
Second. Second.
All those in favor? Sorry, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Thank you.
All right, go ahead. And now you want to turn to the town meeting?
Yep, so we would like to set the fall town meeting for October 17th. That would be the Monday after the holiday, the holiday's on the 10th. So if you vote that, the warrant would open tonight. And we put it in the newspaper on the 11th and notify all departments on the 11th. And articles will be accepted until September 1st at 3:30 p.m. And.
1st, that's close.
Yep. It usually is in October because, you know, everyone knows it's coming and they're ready for anything that they think they're gonna need. And our last day to post the warrant would be on October 13th. And so. So we, October 11th, I'm sorry.
Okay.
October 11th, yep.
We need to make sure Walter is aware of the.
Yep.
So I know we always have this question.
And I gave you the wrong dates. So it opens tonight, closes on the 25th. September 12th, it goes to the FinCom. And then October 6th will be the last day to post.
October 6th, okay.
And the warrant with recommendations on October 11th.
Yeah, I'd like, yeah, I'd like to make a motion to open the fall annual town meeting warrant.
For a set date of October 17th for the meeting?
Yep.
We've got a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Does anyone else have to approve the date of the town meeting?
The superintendent already knows.
Okay. Let me make sure Walter knows, cause he asked me today.
Yep.
Okay. Sounds done?
Yep.
All right, mark your calendars. Oh, the town manager's contract, we already approved, just a little context, we approved this in our executive session, but we now have to vote on it in open session.
So the only thing, I just had two subsections that needed to get changed unless there was wording. If you please tell me if I'm wrong. They were listed as chairman. I'm sorry, I'm that person, I'm just trying to do it.
We're gonna make sure.
So it's just subsection, or section B, subsection A should read Chair of the Board, section X B, I can't think right now, 15, notices the address needs to read Chair of the Select Board. Remember that? I'm good.
All right, we have a motion to approve the town manager's contract as approved in executive session with those amendments.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Okay, ARPA funding requests. I think I gave you the, you have the list. We have some more requests. I met with the superintendent of schools last week. And so the I N I, remember they had to have an I N I study? Well, it turns out the Y L roof drains do not go into the sewer. So we've revised the request for the Y L I N I to $40,000, which is a lot less than they were looking for. But they do have, as they're working, we train on different projects. They've discovered some asbestos issues in all three elementary schools. And so they're looking for $99,800 to address the asbestos issues. Then also, Ray Cord was great in working with the company to get an estimate and a contract for the fiber optic connection to the new senior community support center. And it was just under 50,000, I put it at 50,000 in case they run into any difficulties. And the chief has two requests. He needs to, every year their cells are inspected and they always seem to have a punch list of items. But there's certain items that the chief needs to address in the cell blocks. And that's 14,900. And the chief is also looking for portable radios for the men, the officers, excuse me, at 76,000. And that would still leave us with a balance of 794,974 dollars. If you have any questions for the chief.
Yeah, I, in the, in the list, it said it was related to the behavioral. Is that, that's what it was worded, right? Like the cell, the cell itself specifically?
Yeah.
I don't know what you can or can't tell us about it.
The cell is really just, it's 20, you know, over 20 years old. They do come in every single year and they, they find, you know, the water's too hot, water's too cold, there's a missing screw or something. But this, last year when they came, there was some suicide prevention that they wanted to be taken care of.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Just wanted to clarify that that's what it was, thank you.
So I ask that you approve those requests.
I have a motion to approve.
I'll, I'll try it.
Go ahead.
All right. Do we need dollar amounts?
Yeah, I would, I would read what they are in the dollar amounts.
Okay, it's gonna take me a second, but I got it. Thanks, page 85. All right, I'm gonna start. I know, I know.
Yeah, they're printed out.
All right, so. That's not my page 85.
Here.
All right.
Kevin, here.
There, we got it. Okay. So I move to approve the ARPA funds request of $14,900 to the Norton Police Department for cell block repair and $76,000 to the Norton Police Department for portable radios. Also, the fiber optic connection to the senior community support center of $50,000 and for asbestos abatement at the elementary schools of $99,800.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? For the radios. All right, next on the agenda is, Christine, Kevin, they went to the, is it new select board members?
Yeah.
Newly elected Select Board Members Association held an interim meeting. Unfortunately, I wish I could have gone, but I couldn't. So do you guys want to give us some? Part of this, I just want to say too, at our next meeting in, later in August, we're gonna, it's gonna be a planning session. So I ask that we all take a look at this, I think it's some great information, I'd love for you guys to share with us. And then we can incorporate some of these best practices as we move forward.
Go ahead, you start.
Yeah, sure, so, yeah, so Christine and I attended, attended this session in Devens. It was, there was a few presentations, I think this one, this one here about the open meeting law was, was probably the most informative of them. So we just wanted to share this with the board, there's, there's a lot of great information on here, a lot of specific examples that they provided here of, you know, of, you know, how to, you know, how to make sure you're complying with the the open meeting law, especially when it comes to electronic communication, social media posting, text messaging, telephones or smartphones, all that kind of stuff. So there was a, there was a panel discussion that was sort of wide ranging about, you know, relations between select boards and town managers and working as a, you know, working as a team and the importance of doing that. There was a discussion about D E I in towns. So, yeah, I don't know if Christine has any more details, but that's, that's pretty much what the, what the session was about. Definitely recommend any new select board member to attend.
Do they do these, was this recorded at all or no?
I do not.
This session wasn't, like, the meeting itself wasn't, the, that got emailed out to us. So if you prefer to have an email version, we can send that out to you. They also did a budgeting and budgeting and municipal financing 101, which was really helpful too. And then, yeah, the panel discussion, and then just like working collaboratively. They had a former town manager of Arlington come and discuss like ways to essentially work with each other and work with different departments in the town. And some like, you know, hiccups you might have along the way. So, I mean, we, we met people who were, who, this is their third year, so coming up to us. And then there's people who, like Kevin, were newly elected. So it was very nice seeing how, you know, how many people still wanted to see this session. So if they do ever offer it again, I highly recommend going. Yeah, it was, it was really informative and that, I mean, that PowerPoint itself was just really eye opening too, so.
Yeah, and I think, again, just spinning off of that for our meeting later this month, you know, let's figure out what, what we can distill out of this and what's relevant. I mean, obviously, you know, no secret, we've had all sorts of issues with the open meeting law. I'm still trying to understand it, I, I can't tell you, it pains me, I get an email and all of us are on it. I'm like, I don't think I could apply to this, I'm not sure. Like, let's just get 100% clarity, let's just get it so we're all on the same page. There is a lot of back and forth, I get it, on the social media stuff, let's just figure it all out. You know, all of us being in the same room having this conversation, I think will be super helpful. You know, and again, it goes to how we interact with, so with other committees, but also with the town manager. So anything you guys can think of that'd be great, sort of best practices that we can shape that agenda for that meeting would be super helpful.
And I think the one thing that, more than anything, cause it was an attorney who came and spoke about this presentation, was if you're unsure, talk to your town council. That was, that was essentially the overall theme, like, people were asking questions and then she'd say, refer to your town council, when in doubt, refer to them, get their, get their clarification. Cause why, why try to step in something if you can avoid it by doing something else, so.
Well, and I think once we sort of have distilled, you know, the main points of how, how we're gonna communicate going forward, we also figure out how we communicate that out to the public. Because, you know, we're put in positions because people are asking us questions and it's just, it's, it's challenging. So I think that'd be super important. Speaking of which, how did your open, open hours, office hours?
Yeah, I had two people show up, Steve, I'm gonna butcher his last name.
Marshall?
Marshall, yes. Yeah, he came and gave, he had some zoning things that he has worked, been working on on his own. So I'm gonna let him present that at some point.
So that's exactly.
But he just wanted my opinion, so I gave my opinion.
And Mike, you said that Mike Tool had two people came when he was served out. So, you know, again, I, I think we continue, you know, the summer's obviously, I think, acquired our time. And I think, you know, it'd be probably the best to wait to the fall where we can actually, as we're, as we go now, we're gonna communicate it out to, you know, everyone else. I think that would be super important. We can give it a shot and again, if it doesn't work and if it's not, I mean, why do something if nobody's responsive to it? But if someone is, then, you know, I don't know, I think let's be creative. If that doesn't work, maybe we try, you know, maybe you're on call, like you have, you know, instead of having it physically be somewhere, maybe there's a phone number for people to call. And I'm just trying to figure out what to do.
Rule. One of the other good things that came out of this MMA meeting was, was using the MMA as a resource for best practices or grant applications, model legislation, wording, you know, all that kind of stuff. You know, this, they're a great resource for that.
You know, I wonder if it's too late, but to see if there was someone from the association that could. that could, again, not do this presentation, but do a piece of this presentation or the best practice, or something we decide that we want some guidance on, an agenda item for the meeting.
They said talk to your town council about it. That, that's not a.
The town council?
No, no, I don't mean for, I, I don't mean open meeting laws and all that. I just sort of meant, you know, this is the Select Board Association, there's gotta be, I'm sure there's a president, a vice president and.
Yeah.
Yep.
Maybe it's where, I'm happy to give them a call and just say, you know, I don't know, once, once we form our agenda, if there's someone available that wants to be.
Yeah, we'll get, we'll get the contact for the presidents.
We have the contact information, so we could reach out.
Yeah. There's gotta be someone, it's an association, so.
Sure. Well, I know, I think you had mentioned doing, you know, trying to do, at every select board meeting, trying to do some type of, you know, whether it's development or education or something, so maybe we had a fifteen minute session, you know, on a particular topic from the MMA.
Yeah. That'd be really good.
That'd be great.
And like I said, I did invite my select, select member, board member from Coxborough, Doc Elfman, or Doc, I call him Doc, Mark Elfman, and he's agreed to come. So as we form the agenda, again, I think just thinking about what do we wanna know about how others, he was chair for, for a few years, he's, you know, been on the board for a while, so, you know, I just hope these are, let's get it all done. And the other important thing, just a reminder, is that meeting, you know, bring calendars, let's really see as much as we can do, like, like, let's think about the budget cycle and if we can even put holds on the calendars throughout the fiscal year, that would be great. As soon as we can as we go. That's great, I'm glad you guys went, thank you very much for doing that. All right. Other business. Well, we just got this today, this letter. I don't know if it's something we need to, a woman is requesting use of the gazebo at the Library Square on the date of Saturday, October fifteenth, for use of public prayer. And she was told that to submit a request in writing in detail. I think.
Is there anything else she needs to do? Like, get a comment or anything?
It's her grocery.
I'll have to get just some details on her, how many people and.
Okay.
I just have a quick question about that. Are you supposed to submit a request for something like this?
To use the town common?
Yeah.
In writing, that, so she was told correctly? Or was she talking?
Is that all this?
I don't know, we should talk to.
Is this all in relation to a legal notice? It seems like different things.
Oh, so this is, okay. Is there a special form or something? I'm part of the Norton Business Association, we were gonna do an event and we were told that we didn't have to fill out anything. So I just wanna make sure.
This is her form.
Yeah, I know. There's no form, just contact.
Okay.
Just, you know, the select board's office and say, look, 'cause we don't want two groups showing up.
The same.
Yeah, yeah, no, it makes sense, yeah. I just wanted to be sure.
The next thing you have, that's just an RFQ that's going out, the, to repair gravestones.
Yeah, we had talked about that, yeah.
Yep.
So what was the rest of the, this was not in the packets, right?
The gravestone repair one, you know, there is already one bid, right?
There's one person that wants to bid, yeah.
Okay. Oh, no, I thought I heard that that was kinda time-sensitive too.
Yeah.
As far as the cost, so.
Yeah. Is there anything else on here that you need to be, yeah, okay. All right, town managers report.
Okay. Just an update on the traffic safety committee. I gave you a list of, from the departments, people that, I gave you a new list tonight 'cause Christine Hattville got back to me and she'll be the school representative. And Sandy is, has, is on vacation, Sandy Allahad, she's reached out to the alternative transportation committee to see if there's anyone interested. So with the recommendation that we have a highway rep, police fire, select board, alternative transportation and school department, that'd be six. So then if we put three residents on, that'd be nine. And I know we have a couple residents that have already expressed interest, so if we say wait until your first meeting in September, that would give people time to, that are interested, to submit a letter of interest and you could appoint the residents at that time. And the committee, just, people should know, it'll be a committee that should meet on a regular basis and hear any traffic safety concerns from residents and then identify any possible low-cost solutions for those and then work to seek funds to make those appropriations.
Yeah, definitely we wanna get three different precincts too.
Yeah, that'd be good.
To diversify.
Yep.
Well, obviously, some of them are by those markets.
Yeah.
Yeah, all markets.
Just on the reservoir area, we did meet with Fishing Gang and gave them the parcels on South Highland. And so there, we asked them to check the depths off of the shore there and see what we could do there for putting a boat marsh there to try and alleviate some of the activity down at Juniper. And then we really, I think, one of the things we wanna look at is again, talk to the neighbors and see about removing those stones, putting fencing up to limit the access and go, go that route.
So I, I know I sent you the email into John, I think, about, you know, the discussion that I had with a neighbor who was there, who was, seemed to be like the spokesperson for the other neighbors. So if there's any, you know, further discussion with those neighbors, I would definitely suggest reach out to him.
Yeah.
'Cause he has a very good relationship with them and can communicate, rather than being like the town forcing it upon them, you know, kinda, kinda mitigate it, 'cause the idea is that, of course, I read some, some things might not be feasible financially and knowing the area very well myself, a lot of it would look, I think, nicer than just removing the stones and having it, you know, drive straight through. So I, you know, definitely wanna explore different ideas too.
Okay. Anything else on that? Just, we did receive notice from the state today, we're now at stage three. I know a alert went out.
Yeah, I read that, but it said, under no circumstances we, we have well water. I thought well water was still.
Yeah. Town water you can't.
Right, but well water is still good. What's weird, our irrigation's going on, my God, what's gonna be looking at me?
So, yeah, no outside use of water at all right now. No handheld hoses, nothing. Just one other thing, I know I sent you information last week from the EPA, a flyer that they had distributed to residents over near the Mile Standish Industrial Park. There's a company there that cleans medical equipment and they use a chemical that dissipates in the air. So they sent those notices, hand-delivered them to anyone within a mile radius because it dissipates after that. And they're gonna hellhole a local meeting, they were looking at September thirteenth, but Taunton said that their city council's meeting on that night, so they're looking at, which, I'm still not sure what the date is. And on the flyer, it gives access to their website for any of the residents that might have, wanna get on and have questions. The EPA would answer any of their questions. They did say that you would have to be exposed twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week for seventy years.
Right, I heard that they gave good explanation that there wasn't much, neighbors weren't, totally freaked out.
But they do, you know, they just, as a precaution, they wanted to send that notice to all those neighbors. That's it.
Excellent. One thing I didn't mention, Mike, you weren't here, we set the town meeting, it's gonna be October seventeenth, which just reminded me, Walter Ekel had, there's a, there's a, I don't, I don't know if this, if this is being.
It is not.
No, I know it's not, well, we've had lots of issues with it. So do I bother? I mean, this is an announcement, we could just put it, or it's, it is being reported now.
Yeah.
Okay. So I will just make the announcement about, we have an opening on the Norton Finance Committee. The Finance Committee plays an important part of Norton's town government, it serves as a fiscal watchdog, makes important recommendations to the town in the town meeting articles, administrators, funds related to funding and town operations. A strong financial background is not necessary to serve on the committee, just a willingness to work with other Norton residents for the best governance of the town. If you're interested, please feel free to contact Walter Ekel, the Norton Town Manager, it'll be on the website.
Town moderator.
Did I say town, town manager? Don't, don't call my, the town moderator, thank you.
Don't call me select man.
Won't do that. Anyway, it's a great opportunity to participate and contribute to our town. So if there are any folks out there that would like to put their name in, contact Walter directly and.
Just for your benefit, I know your next meeting is on the twenty-fourth, the warrant closes on the twenty-fifth, so if you have any articles that you think you'd want, we should talk about them on the twenty-fourth.
Nothing like one-day preparation.
Did we say September first?
What's that?
Did you say it closed on September first?
Yeah.
That's on the twenty, that's due about one week later, it would be the first, it is the twenty-fifth for, for the date that we chose.
The challenge is you've got with the holiday, I don't know how, where else you could push the town meeting to. You'd be into November.
Right, then you get trouble setting the tax rate.
I'll be in board.
You wouldn't have trouble setting the tax rate, you'd be having trouble setting the budget 'cause you couldn't certify free cash, right? It wouldn't, it wouldn't have to do with the tax rate.
Well, yeah, well, we have to have the final budget before we can set the tax rate and we don't have the final budget until we have that October meeting.
Well, I do, so that's gonna change a little bit of the nature of, and maybe we do it at the tail end.
Yeah.
So the people that are participating in the strategy and all that, they don't have to stay for that portion of it.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I, my arrival is at eight-thirty, just for the record. The, should we start sending around some of the proposed warrants that are already kind of, those that the town manager ran through to you, so we can maybe before the twenty-fourth, start kinda just, just put it on our radar, just so we can get some exposure to this, we're not seeing it for the first time on.
And if, yeah. Anything that we get, we'll just let you know in advance.
And you mean for all committees, boards, departments, or ours specifically?
No, I, the entire warrant.
Okay, perfect, okay. 'Cause I was like, I haven't heard of any for ours.
Yeah, not all the entire warrant, yeah. Just, but it's obviously a draft at that point. I just make sure it's a draft, everyone knows, like, if he sends it out, it's a draft, 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 draft.
All right. I'm gonna approve the payroll warrant and the invoice warrants.
I had a couple things.
What?
For the select board report mail.
Oh, sorry, I was just, all right.
Yeah, I, I pulled the two as well.
Okay, I was just gonna, okay, go ahead.
Oh, you're gonna do it at the end?
Yes.
Well, we were, we were in the middle of it and then it was like dead silence and then we just.
Okay, no, we don't, we don't have to.
All right, go ahead.
Okay. I just, I'll probably next, begin next week to, or next meeting too, but the Norton VFW is having the seventy-fifth anniversary celebration on Saturday, September tenth, from twelve to five. Music by Old Eggs at eleven, at two P.M. Fifty fifty rattles. Parking in the back of the O and there'll be a shuttle service to the VFW. So there's that. I, I had a couple other really quick things. As you all know, we got, we got the meeting materials last night, yesterday, and it's over two-hundred and thirty pages. To have gone through all that for a meeting today is fairly impossible and I, I believe not fair to the people that come in here. So if there's any way we can get those, you know, maybe the week before.
Totally agree, this was, we had with.
I know it was rushed on and I'm not, I don't blame anybody, but I just, you know.
No, no, and the, the whole notion is Mike and I meet the Thursday before and pull everything together for Friday, which is with vacations and everyone out.
Okay. And well, and the other thing is, I mean, the agenda, we didn't get the agenda till Sunday night. I was busy on Monday, I couldn't look at it until it was already posted. And I had assumed that something was gonna be on there, that it wasn't. Sorry, and there was some information from, from a SURFED meeting that there's lots of money available, so I, I wanted to ask about that. Have, have you seen that, Mike?
I have.
Is there anything to it, or?
There's always money out there, just.
The impression I got was, was that it was, you know, you had to kinda act fast to get some, some funding.
Yep, we'll look at that.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, that, that's something that, I mean, we emailed this at the end of July, so I just wanted to make sure that we're, we're acting that.
Jen just got back from attorney, it just been, yeah, totally get it, we're gonna, that's part of the whole process, we're trying to streamline and get things out in a timely fashion.
That's all I got.
Yep.
Madam Chair, again, I apologize to the board for being late. Just wanted to get you up to, and you may have discussed it, but I've been receiving several calls regarding Gilbert Street, the project in Mansfield on Gilbert Street, and I've asked the town, Mr. Town Manager, if he would look into it, it was, it was already discussed tonight. Okay? If he would look into it, because my understanding is that their proposed traffic flow plan is to go through Norton. So the property's gonna be built right on the corner, the corner in Mansfield, right on the Mansfield-Norton, out of Borough Line. And a citizen reached out to me and there's a, is an active committee just that's really concerned with the traffic flow over in that side of, side of town. And so I spoke with Mike today and he's gonna reach out to their building to kinda get some understanding on that. Also, and I had spoken to the chair about this, just wanted to get the rest of the board up to this, we had a, some concerns about just some recent fires that went up in the cemeteries about no dogs. And we did a little research on it as well and it was determined that it's actually state law. It's a state law and so forth.
Well, just saying, also, I've talked about, sadly, people aren't picking up after their pets, so it is what it is and, you know, I gotta respect that, that you can't clean up everything an animal does in a cemetery, so, you know, it is what it is.
Yeah, and I did circle back with that individual and told him that it's, it wasn't actually, 'cause this individual thought it was a town law or that this was an enforcement law, it's actually a state law. So it's really, it's nothing to do with us, per se. And the last was, I was reached, a gentleman by the name of, boy, a gentleman, the gentleman that's gonna be filing a citizen's petition just to talk about changing R forty requirements for freestanding solar panels by special permit. He's in, I can give you his name next, next time we meet, but I'm just wanting to kinda talk about that and it sounds, it was interesting, but I, I just wanted to put it on the select boards that, I told him, I said, you know, it's not required to come to the select board on, as a citizen's petition, but we would love to have you possibly present to us when and when it's.
He's gonna put a citizen's petition for the next town meeting?
Correct, he's already, he's already filed it.
Oh, he's already filed?
Yeah.
Does that mean signatures did he need?
To file a citizen's petition for town meetings is, I believe, ten, but Peter probably's gonna correct me on that.
Ten.
Ten. I believe it's ten, ten, ten on that.
Ten.
And then it was, but it's, well, there's, you can't change it, that's one of the funny things about it, it has to be written, it's like, it's ready to go. So he, it sounds pretty reasonable, what he's asking for is just to still do and keep the special permit side of it, so it still has to go through a special permit, but it's just adding it as condition. But I asked him that it might be worthwhile just to do his presentation to us.
Get him on, yeah, not the next meeting, but maybe the following.
Yeah, I mean, when it's, yeah, when it's, when it's time to do that, so.
That'd be great.
Those were just some of the things that I, you know, just kinda follow up and I had decent, just one last thing was, and Steve probably had the same experience, wasn't a huge turnout on the office hours, but it was a positive turnout, it was, I think, I had four people come by. You know, some of them wanted to just chat and just find out what's coming on in town, a couple had some good ideas. One of them actually brought up before Mike even kinda presented this to me, that about that lot regarding the, over near the rez. So it was an interesting, put it on my radar and just had an interesting conversation, so.
Yeah, you said we'll keep monitoring that and we'll keep doing it going forward and, you know, if it's working, great. Excellent. All right, I'm gonna approve the payroll warrants and the invoice warrant as part of the, as, uh, agenda. All right, I'm going to approve the payroll warrants and the invoice warrant as part of the, uh, agenda. All right, next meeting agenda, we've talked about, oh, it's a national, oh, that's the.
The poll.
Oh, my God, we have to do a hearing for that?
They're quite.
All right. So now we have a hearing and we also have discussion on warrants, so maybe we start. That's where the poll hearing will be quick. All right.
Poll hearing is quick.
Yeah. And then, well, we'll open it at, what, 7:15, I guess?
Can we just know which location it is? Usually it's the number of the poll and this may come surprise you. We, I'm pretty sure, I can speak to the board. We don't know the numbers of the polls.
Speak yourself.
All right. So I'd love to get feedback. Next meeting agenda, as we talked about earlier, it's going to really be about setting the stage for the coming year. I want to talk, you know, bring calendars. We talked about this. We're going to set, like, Mike, you're going to have to advise us on when things are happening. So when we can, when we can recommend that we have joint committee meetings with finance and school committee and all that. So that's going to be a part of it. So calendaring, we're going to talk about best practices. I do have some special guests will come in and talk to us. But I want this to be really like, you know, informative meeting. This isn't just, just so we can, you know, have another meeting. I really want this to be really thoughtful. And I want to hear from everyone, sort of what, what are your own personal sort of priorities and agendas for the coming year? And what is, you know, what does that look like? And, you know, the big nut that I still, I can't figure out, it's not so much, it is, definitely, there's a big, the elephant in the room. The communication internally, but there's also that external, how do we, how do we message out to the town? And how do we get that information out there? And even when we talk about, you know, there's still a lot of bumps about the open meeting law. We're trying to figure that all out. When we do figure that out and we're all in consensus here, I think it's super important that we also communicate that to the residents. Because there's nothing more painful when we all get an email and you can't respond at all. And, you know, sometimes people don't realize that and, you know, it just makes it more challenging. So those are sort of my agenda items. You know, definitely I'd love to hear if everyone has their one or two things that they personally want to see get done this year. I think that would be really helpful. And just go from there. And then obviously now we're going to have to finish the meeting with reviewing the warrant, but, yes.
So just to reiterate, can we just make sure we get the draft agenda and the materials in advance? Okay, I mean, honestly, I was coming to this meeting thinking that we should postpone because we didn't have enough time to read it yet.
Okay. Fair enough. You'll get it, but this one I'm asking, this is participatory, so I like agenda items sent to me. I think this is really important. This is, this is our meeting. This is going to be what, we're going to, how we want to structure ourselves going forward for the year. So just as important, I hope it's going to.
Just put a clarification out, Chair. I'm sorry.
No, no, go ahead.
So, I mean, if you go, if I go back, I've got a list of, you know, eight things I want to achieve. Doesn't mean they're happening this year.
Right.
At what point do you want to say, "Share it, don't share it"? You know, it's, I mean, some of the things I may never get to, but these are things that I would like to, like to do. So I'm trying to get an understanding on that. What do you want or?
Well, I think the first priority is this coming year. Obviously, we're, you know.
Someone we prioritize, but what I think.
Absolutely. I mean, we're, you know, we also, we're all on electric cycles too. So we sort of have to take it, and I think the fiscal year is, you know, obviously that's what we're running on right now. I think looking ahead for this year in particular, absolutely, I want to hear, you know, long-term sort of thoughts for the towns and things like that. But let's start with calendaring and figuring out how we're going to get through this year. What are our priorities going to be? I think listening to the select board member, Mark Elfman, who's, they're, Foxborough's so good at this sort of strategic planning and they've been doing it for years and years and years. He's super easy to listen to and he can kind of guide us through, like, you know, here's how we do it. It's really simple. And, and he sort of walked me through it. And I think, again, thinking through the agenda, I think I might start with him. And I think that'll really help everyone sort of frame their own sort of thoughts going forward. And we're going to, you know, really take to our, some of the best practices that come out of it. You know, the Select Board Association meeting that these two, so I think that'd be great.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
As opposed? Great.